Any discussion on the minutes as presented? Any questions or issues or changes? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented? Anybody opposed? No move, thank you. What I'd like to, no, go ahead.
Just as a point. Tonight's meeting, we're all going to be setting into the two seats that are not on here.
The two seats, well, essentially, you're talking about above and beyond Mike and.
Talking about Mike and Megan, who fill two slots there. Charlie's not here and Michelle is not here. They will fill those two seats.
That'll be good.
Correct?
Any issues on that?
Nope.
It's not on mine. That would make seven?
Yep.
All right, not including me. That's a question, including me.
Eight, right?
There's eight of you there.
John does not take over. John and Mike don't actually take over those seats.
Oh, right.
Then I'm making.
Gotcha.
Jesse's just, yes, as a. We're all on the same page.
I know.
Would you be ready to talk about things that are still hanging out there that?
I can give you things that are permitted and that things, I mean, there's things out there I can't, yes.
No, what you can't, no.
I have somebody.
Yes, just to bring the board up to, how do you say, update? And certainly, John, and even though Mike's been on as an alternate, now he's in the capacity as a full member, just so we're all on the same page. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, you want to do it now?
Yes, please.
All right. All right, as you're all aware, Dunkin' Donuts is moving into their new facility next door to Circle K. That project is near completion. I was up today and did another inspection and a walkthrough and they're pretty much there, they're signed. People had to be here next week and counters and mill work is scheduled also for next week. So they're getting close to being done. Last year, we issued one hundred and fifty-four permits in the town of Illinois Rocket. This year, so far, we have issued, as of today, seventeen. So there's some activity going on. We've got a couple of new structures permitted that will start in the spring. Recently, I've been doing a lot with solar panels on homes or engine panels put on to roofs of homes. I've had numerous calls about it. I've actually got two that we have issued permits to. One thing that I have been doing is working on solar, solar energy system ordinance that I'm going to bring forward to you. So we'll have to set a meeting for that once we get good enough so that we can come together and talk about it. Right now, I'm kind of skirting around with it on how, because a lot of the, the homes such as up in what we call the new development were prefab homes or Grossman Homes or his Robocoms, there are a lot of different companies. So we've been requiring them to give us an engineered plan that that, those solar panels will still be all right with the snow load that this community receives. Another issue that's been taking some time is tiny homes. We're starting to get some, some talk about tiny homes now and where we can go with them and what we can do. That's a very complex legal.
Issue.
Issue that legislature passed and we have to live with what they passed. So I'm trying still to sort that out some, but in, in the long run, from what I'm reading, tiny homes are considered single-family dwelling. And if you don't have anything in your zoning for that, you have to go by single-family dwelling or an accessory building. One thing that I did find out doing, doing some of the research is there are, there are different types of tiny homes. There are tiny homes that people build, stick-built or buy an Amish building or something like that. But there's also manufactured tiny home. Well, a manufactured tiny home, if it comes into the community, if they come in and have a place to put it. If they have the state certification title to that, to that tiny home, then we have no inspection rights or any on that, on that building. Or we would be like sewer lines, water, nothing as far as the plumbing or inside the, inside the home. So that's another one that I've put a little bit together on. We'll come back with an ordinance to, we really need to talk about that.
Any? Was it, so there are a series of tiny homes that are built on trailers that are on wheels, you know, mobile. Is that considered in this mix?
That's, yes, that's a certified, that would be a certified, if, yeah, it was built by a manufacturer. That's a certified home and, and it will come with a state title.
Oh, okay, so that, that is the, the design you were speaking of.
They don't go by, they go by American Plumbing Standards. And, yeah, and, and the other thing that they do is as far as fire and life safety issues, they don't go by life safety code, they go by life safety code for recreation trailer or for a motorhome. Same idea, yeah. So those are all points that I didn't realize until I started researching some of this stuff.
The tiny home, not concept, but issue, is it, is there restrictions in this town on size of home? Or is it, is it more the fact that we discussed off prior to the meeting, the successor dwelling unit?
It's more or less that we don't, we don't have an actual rise, we have a height limit, we don't have a size limit. And that's the same thing they would have to, even if they bought a manufactured tiny home, because you can buy a manufactured tiny home that's ten by ten, that's forty-five feet high, which would be allowed over our, we allowed for single story. So those are just, you know, there's a lot, a lot to it that we can bring forward when we do this. The other issue that I dealt with today again was the landowner called me on, at our last meeting, we talked about rezoning commercial forest lands. And as I related to Tony, I told him that we didn't really do anything with that. In order for something to go forward to that, he's going to have to come to us with a plan of what he wants to do. And then it would forward from there. I don't think that he has a plan, I think he's looking at trying to sell. Going on there. Other than that, I guess that's, you know, there's a lot of buzz stuff going on, but I haven't issued any permits yet. I can't really say much of what happened. There've been some, some property sold that no plans brought forward.
Just to elaborate on that zoning thing was mentioned in the minutes that you received. The, the issue came up in the context of the property being used for a solar farm project. But Board, Planning Board has not received any plans on what's being planned for. But we did investigate what the options were to rezone the, the area question, which is that the east end of this community towards Doby Flowing. And that's when Mary Costigan, a lawyer from Bernstein Shore, came here and gave us an update. I won't go into it, but essentially, she indicated what we needed to do as a community to move on rezoning this commercial forest land area at the east end of the town proper. And the, the issue that we're just discussing now is Planning Board hasn't received anything to say, we want to do this on this property. It's just a request to rezone the, the area. And when we discussed this at that meeting in September of last year, the spot zoning question came up for discussion. And I don't know whether it was settled, someone can jump in here and correct me if I'm stating it. But essentially, rezoning that property just unto itself with everything being commercial forest land around it and no purpose to rezone it other than the request of the landowner just left things limbo. All right. So that's going to stay outstanding until this board gets something in writing from the landowner that says, this is what we want to do. And then we'll start the ball, Planning Board will start the ball rolling. The other thing that was discussed on September, in September, was I forgot the exact term, I think it's contact, contract zoning, where, where you have a property owner that requests an area to be rezoned and it has that attribute that it's kind of a spot zoning in amongst an area that's zoned differently. The zoning of that type would need revamping of our zoning ordinance. We don't have anything on our zoning ordinance that deals with that type of rezoning request for a single property to change hands at the owner's request. We could, as Planning Board, put certain parameters around that, whatever that is. You don't know what's planned on the area other than discussions about a solar farm, that's about it. So things are kind of in limbo and until we get something from the landowner with plans, something that we could actually look at and say, okay, this is what's planned. Access road is going to be here, here is going to be open, forest removal of this size. All this has got to be in writing, something that you'll look at, say, okay, this is what's going to be happening if we move forward. Without that, we're not dead in the border, we're just not happening forward. All right, thank you.
And one, one last item, Tony, I had numerous calls about Panquas Senior Housing Project. Just so that you all know, nothing has moved since we gave them site plan review. And we gave them okay approval to go ahead with that project. We have had no contact with them whatsoever, have not, remaining ready. So just so you know, there's a lot of buzz. We don't really know yet.
Has anything been done with the Rusik Avenue School?
They, they tell me that, that they're going to do that first.
But they have not done it.
They haven't really, they've, they've, nothing major.
Tony, I had some communication with Jason Byrd from Panquas within the last several weeks or so. And the update that I had was they should be getting going again in the existing building very soon. They plan to have it up for lease in the fall. And he mentioned that they still intend to break ground on the new construction this summer. So, but, and, and you know, that was several weeks ago, but that was the first update in quite some time.
And, and that was their original plan, I believe, going to be the summer. They've got dumpsters there, but I keep going by and there's nothing in the dumpster yet. Unless I dump them before I get to check up, but I think they're just getting ready.
My memory is not failing me, but I can't recall, we did not, as a planning board, we did not review the renovations to the Rusik Avenue School. We almost knew that that was a game plan, but I'm thinking that that's internal to that structure, doesn't change the footprint of the building. I don't believe that came before the planning board in that sense.
It did, I mean, it, it would change of use.
No, no, that doesn't, no, it does not, from, from what they tell me they're going to do with that, it would not come to site.
What about the underground tanks?
Underground tanks.
What about them?
There's underground tanks and that's no longer.
I don't think they're there anymore, are they?
They took a lot of this.
They were, they were going to take them out in the fall and I believe they're gone.
Really?
I, I can't swear to that. We would not, we would not permit that, that's, that's done through fire marshal.
What was tanks for?
They were the, them.
Oil tanks?
Bunkersheep.
Being like five thousand gallon tanks or something like that, tanks?
Oh, I think it was, yeah, I think it was a ten or fifteen thousand.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Both the schools got them at one time.
All right, no, I, I didn't know about, about the tanks so forth. But Fire Marshal, both of you guys jump in on this. Fire Marshal would have had some oversight input into that?
Oh, oh, yes. Yeah, they have to permit to put tanks in or take tanks out. That's all done through them, lo- locally, we don't.
Because I know the planning board did not get involved with the Circle K tanks. As far as the particulars, it was just zoomed on my part that Fire Marshal thought was overseeing that somewhat of thing. Well, we'll see what happens with this project. It's been, it's been a while. I don't know if that's going to be an issue, but we'll see what happens. I don't know that anything's really changed, but it's been a while. Planning Board approved that project for the construction of those, that housing, thirty-six units that. All right. Any other?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a time lapse on that or not when, when we give site plan review.
On the, on the.
On.
On.
Application.
Yeah.
In the thirty-six units?
Yeah, once it gets approved, they have to do that in, so such a period of time, I, I'm not.
I'd have to look at the particulars, anybody jumps in on the. Well, there, there is eighteen months. If nothing is done for eighteen months, then gets brought back to the planning board, how things might get viewed, might be different if things have changed. But I know that we, we, the community ran into, not a situation, but with the solar farm project on the old mill property, things kind of got up toward that limit and nothing kind of changed was essentially the, the project just had in advance, but nothing was going to change that the planning board had a, don't give a, a review of it. The, the.
Was that different, Tony, for industrial versus commercial?
The Board did, Planning Board did have more of a, I wouldn't say lax, but we allowed more leeway with industrial projects on the mill property. But of course, we were aware of things, but there were higher authorities than this board that were overseeing projects on that mill property. We were just in the loop, know what was happening, but great, all the paperwork jumped through other hoops, not ours. Any other things, Tom?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on my planning board agenda is, there's something keeping on board, so I don't get too many things. We have at least one vacancy on, on the planning board, or will. We've got a new generation mix here with individuals coming on and individuals like myself and Charlie going off. But we have one vacancy that will materialize in that transition. And that's the alternate position that you held, Mike. And what I want is, does anyone have any names or indication of someone that might or has shown an interest that you could bring up to public? Don't start any balls rolling that you don't want to have come back to bite you.
I kind of don't know. Hey, that, going to take over that.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that's.
Says he's going to take over.
Well, that starts the ball rolling and that's about all we can get.
And Tony, I also received an email, again, several weeks ago, somebody with interest in applying to the planning board. Can't remember their name off the top of my head, but we sent them the application, we haven't received it back yet, but I think we'll see several applications coming through. Looks like Matt wants to put his hand up and say that he's planning on doing it as well.
Okay, but you're, you're applying for that alternate position, Tim, Mike? Okay. All right, thanks, thank you very much, you'd be a good addition if you follow through on that and it'll point it to the board. The other thing that needs to be discussed and hopefully finalized tonight is my position on the planning board, I, I've chaired the board for a number of years. And when, I believe it goes back to Louis Pelletier, when he was on the planning board, and he was secretary. And when he had to leave the board because of serving on the town council, I don't think we had anybody to step forward, I can't remember the exact things that happened, but it wasn't something that I wanted necessarily to take on, so I just took that on. But essentially, those two positions, chair and secretary, they can be grouped together. Someone wants to do yeoman's work, but essentially, those are two positions. And what I want from the board is individuals that are going to put their names forward or have nominees that would be volunteering the consideration as chair and or secretary. Go ahead, Mike.
I plan on, I'm.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's take that, any, any remarks you want to make in response to that?
No, I know I got some shoes to fill, but it's kind of in my wheelhouse, so I'd like to go with it, give it.
Okay. Any discussion of board members concerning this announcement about Mike wanting to chair the planning? This is your decision, just the way my serving on the board as chair was board's decision when that happened. It got resurrected, should have been done so every year, but it fell through the cracks more than once, just continued. But the board is the one that picks the chair. So any questions that a board member wishes to bring up? And if I can open the discussion a little more, John, even though you're not serving per se in full capacity, you'll be here on this board when I'm not. So chime in. So is there any person that wants to bring up any questions, comments, concerns, ever?
Yeah, excuse me. Well, comments, no questions. I had spoken to Mike about taking the chair earlier. I would plan on nominating Mike to that position. But I would also like to make a comment on Tony. I've served, I got off the council in two thousand and four. The next year, I applied to planning board. So I guess I'm looking like twenty years next year. Tony was here when I came on the board. He was chairman when I came on the board. And so I know he has been for at least twenty years. And I do recall him having to take on the secretary's position because nobody volunteered to do that. And he's carried a tremendous load. And he's done, he's, he's done ninety percent of the legwork bringing it to this board over those years. So I want to highly commend him. And he needs to be recognized. And he needs to be recognized. For at least twenty years of service to this town. And not only as a board member. But as the working chairman of that board. He's gonna be greatly missed. And as Mike said, it's big shoes to fill, but. Mike's capable. And I would nominate Mike as chairman. Of our board.
Thank you, Evan. Uh, any more discussion on this uh, consideration of uh, Mike Wallace? Fully uh, advancing to the. To the, yeah, thank you. Fully advancing to the uh, the uh, chair's position. Uh, anybody else that wishes to uh, bring up any comments, concerns? And uh, Tom just whispered in my ear, so to speak. We need a second to this motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to second it. I um, for Mike uh, to take over the chair. I think he's been um, gaining responsibilities, follow through. I think he's uh, you know, he's gonna be a good uh, advocate. And uh, I think he's shown impartial ability, so I don't think that you have any agenda here. Except for to help the town and uh, to do your best. And so, I'm comfortable with that. And uh, and Tony, it's just um, I I don't even understand how you do what you do. Because I know what I do and and putting things down to paper um, is probably the last thing I do in my, in my course of my day. And uh, you were so eloquent at everything that you have been able to capture and how you've been able to, again, be impartial. And um, just be able to present things so that it's uh, understandable to us laymen. And be able to uh, you know, be there as well in any email, any phone call, anything I I needed uh, myself. Or for others to uh, you know, just ask you questions or to help sign up for trainings or any of this stuff. And um, you know, since I've been on the board, um, I've just uh, I've been wowed by you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I make a comment, Tony?
Please do.
So just real quick, Tony was in my office the other day. And I think we uh, figured out that this makes an even forty years on the planning board. Which is three years longer than I've been alive. So, fun fact for everybody, he's an incredible asset to the town mill pocket. And there will be a ticker tape parade. Uh, but on the, on the, on the um. Motion that y'all have on the floor, um, you know, from a staff perspective. I can say that we a hundred percent support Mike taking over the chair of the board. Is he has the wherewithal, you know, his attention to detail, his understanding of process. Um, you know, we, we have discussed that within our offices. And and uh, absolutely support y'all putting him into that, that spot. So I I appreciate hearing that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I too would, would support Mike. Uh, I think. Mike has the knowledge to, to uh, to do this. And uh, being in that field, in this, in this field, he knows a lot of, of the inner and and outer of it. Um, he comes in the office right off and we talk. And I think that this is a way to go, you know, Tony's term will actually end at the end of March. That gives Tony, that gives Mike two weeks. Pick Tony's brain and we can't thank Tony enough. What he's done, it's just been, it's been remarkable. Stays around here that long and still contributes the way he does. Like the energizing bunny. Oh, I will support Mike. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any more comments? Um, what I've got down on on the motion, Evan, that's your motion about uh, uh, Mike uh?
Yes.
Okay, and Heidi seconded. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for the question. Those in favor of uh, Mike serving as chair? We've got the required uh, individuals, myself included. Congratulations, Sam, Mike. Oh? All right, I gotta admit, I'll, I'll mention, not to scare Mike away. But uh, when you're, when you're the chair of something, you readily realize things don't happen. Unless you do something. So that is a, a facet of being the chair. The other thing I'll mention, because it's uh, it needs mentioning to anyone that serves on a, on a uh. Community uh, committee, planning board, council, wherever, is that people think. We, planning board, have authority. But we don't. We have responsibility. We represent our neighbors, we represent the applicants that come before us. We're obligated to give it our best shot and hopefully it's the right way to go. But do not rule with authority. You're just individual serving. Enough said. And thank you, uh, and congratulations on that point. We've got the position of secretary. Uh, it's a, it's a very. Uh, responsible position. Because what happens at these meetings, it's transcribed to paper. And then at the next meeting, we vote on it. And so what's absent or misrepresented, not purposely, but not accurate, uh, goes in the record. And uh, after all the meetings, I've sent the minutes from the previous meeting to Diana. Burke and Blake, and uh, she keeps those. Now I think they kept uh, digitally uh, for the uh, documents were kept in hard copy. And that's why I found out when I looked into past records. That I, first time I saw my name as a member of the planning board, the February of eighty four. So I seen this when I got on. But uh. Position itself is something that really uh, needs to be taken. With uh, a, a good deal of uh, I wouldn't say it's termination. But uh, it's not willy nilly that we showed up, these people were present. We uh, discussed this, discussed that without enough backup. So that someone down the road could say, I wonder what the heck they did. That's really where this position secretary, you know, really comes in. Someone goes back maybe months, or even maybe even longer than that, says, oh. That's what happened that night. And that's what was approved, but only up to this point, of this point. So the position is a very crucial one that really maintains the integrity of the planning board. And and the record going forward, without it. Kind of losing a lot. To someone that wants to be considered for that position.
I do, I do, uh, that's what I do anyway. That's life for me. I document lots of things, technical writer.
Uh, being as.
I second that.
Well, uh, uh, essentially, uh, your willingness to serve as secretary, even though you're uh, an exil- an alternate member. Uh, I don't think that really is an issue per se. You attend the meetings, and I think you've attended all of them, at least most of them. Uh, just as an alternate. And even though when there wasn't an absence on regular board by the regular board members who were present. So you bring a current historical.
Free year, guys, I can do it.
You, you've got some, some background in what's. Has the new kid on the block.
Yep. I make a motion to accept, Megan.
I second it. Do I start tonight or?
We can uh, we can discuss that, uh, but uh. Yes. So Tom, you made the motion to accept?
Yes.
And Heidi, you second second.
Good chance, two pins and.
Any uh, discussion on this motion for the willingness of, of Bacon to serve as secretary?
I'm very thankful.
Uh, ditto. It's a, it's a.
Yes, and the volunteer finally, yes.
It's a uh, it's a very needed and key position. Because that's really where the historical record, yep. Any other discussion?
I hope I live up to expectation. No, I've got it.
I have no misgivings about people serving on this board uh, in what capacity. It's really termination, I mean, fiction. I'm gonna do a good job. And I know I've tried to do that. Sometimes I think I don't do as well as I should, but that's really where the other board members come in. And I'll say this, uh. There are many smart people that serve in this community and on this board. The only thing I want when someone comes up on the board, I want those smart people. They gotta make sure we discuss the issues, entirety, and have different perspectives. And out those people. Well, I don't know that anybody's not smart, something different perspective. Okay, we need a, for like question, uh, those in favor of uh, serving Bacon? Anonymus as far as my. Thank you again for considering that task. Uh, we already discussed some things that I had listed here as uh, ongoing or unresolved issues. Uh, I'll just list the three of them that I've listed. And uh, if there's others, we'll be aware of them. It's not so much that we're gonna solve anything tonight, but. With the transition of people leaving, myself included, and people coming in. It's just that people know what's still hanging, that's not at some endpoint. Uh, one thing is uh, we had a project up at Circle K. And there's a buffer zone between Circle K and Field Street that's still. A concern. We have uh, a project, I wouldn't say project. We had a property that was uh, altered during uh, past. Three years maybe, at Kelly Lane and Bates Street. And uh, that still remains a, an ongoing, not an issue, but an ongoing. Concern that, that property in the last several months has been uh, altered again. And uh, I don't think you've done. Properly or had, should, but what was done was not something that the planning board would be. Qualified to deal with, because we don't have jurisdiction, but the DEP does. I don't know where that stands.
That, that property, that property still stand, stands under DEP. Uh, any violations that we think that we uh, encounter up there, we're to turn over DEP. See something that we don't think right. Because they have uh, the field engineer keeps coming up.
So they're aware.
They're, they're aware of it, and I've got his contact information.
Yeah, well, the alterations that were made impacted some wetlands area, and that's really where the DEP gets involved. The other thing that was mentioned uh, already, and it's on my list here, is the uh, zoning issue. That was brought up for discussion. That's actually the minutes of this previous meeting. September of last year. And uh, we didn't move on anything because planning board never got anything to act upon. That's really the applicant's uh, requirement. They need to file something with the planning board that says, this is what we wanna do on this property. These are the plans, and that starts the full role. That's my speech.
Is it, is it Emery or some, it's a, it's a plan?
Nobody, nobody, nobody has applied. Uh, Jeff called, hey, call me today. And and that's what I, until somebody puts a plan forward.
Is this Jeff's project? Because if it is, you probably won't get a plan.
I think it's, it's. I think they're trying to sell. That's, that seems to be what it, what it is, is trying to sell it to them. What they can do on it.
Uh, in that respect, the uh, the uh, how would you say? Land, not there. Uh, having that land in commercial forest land, which is now the designation, first forest. Maybe doesn't have the traction that if it was industrial rate or thing, reg- regulation. Something of that, but that gets a spot zoning thing. And uh, I think it's a con- contract uh, zoning. Thank you very much. Uh, I just couldn't remember the term, but we don't have contract zoning, uh, zoning ordinance. We, we can, but it's not there now. But that's really where, where this issue would start. By someone approaching the planning board to get something re-zoned uh, without uh. Full structured plans that this is what I wanna do. This designation of first forest and all fit it.
So, so to, you know, in the short, they have, somebody has, if they wanna do something, somebody has to put a site plan. What they wanna do.
Well, they gotta put something in. If they don't put in a site plan review in a formal sense with, you know, a flat plan. That says, this is what it's gonna look like, uh, then this board needs to. Revamp this document to have this uh.
Adopted.
Contract, contract zone. So that uh, something can be done uh, independent of, of that approach. Where plans are come a full of plenty. Enough said, unless someone wants to chime in? Let me uh, ask this, as far as what I've got down here on my uh, meeting format for tonight. I co- I covered the bases that I thought we needed to cover, and we did cover. And uh, if there's anything that someone says, well, this is something that I think we need to discuss. Let's at least bring it up so that the board members are aware of it. If not, then at some point in time, take a motion to adjourn.
You wanna see if there's any movement for okay, or plans that?
Yeah. Please, I'm sorry, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Oh, that, that's, that's live, Mike.
It's on.
All right, thank you.
So.
I've been in touch with some of you, more Tom and Mike more than anybody else. Tony, I occasionally run into you. However, after having several discussions, I came to the conclusion. Let, let me preface that I've been very lucky to see both sides of the argument. I served on the town council when all this was going on. So I got to see it from a town perspective. And of course I worked for Circle K, so I get to see it right from POV view for Circle K. The conclusion that I've come to is the agreement that was made in ninety-two has no legal binding for Circle K. It doesn't say anywhere that it's the same as if the property sells. We are not Irving. The property is sold three times since we've taken over. They went to Irving, then to Dead River, then back to Irving, then to us. So it's changed hands so many times. Nor in, in that document nineteen ninety-two, does it say Circle K and nobody has signed off on anything related to following that agreement from here, from now till then. That being said, we planted those trees at a good faith and me and George, the gentleman who came with me, who was the representative from GAV Tech, said we were gonna look into alternative pieces to make it more of a visual barrier. We planted those trees out of being, you know, good neighbor. However, the trees do need time to grow. They are gonna grow out a little bit. You know, they're, they're, it's not gonna be exactly what it looks like right now. The, the trees are still saplings. That being said, I wanted to come tonight to make it clear that we requested more information from the CEO after he threatened to pull our license of operation and we have heard nothing since then. I have his original email where he stated that we were going to receive daily fines with the potential of having our occupancy license pulled. My project manager reached out to me and reached out to the CEO by phone and email and requested to see documentation and where Circle K signed anything or legal obligation for us to do it. And we have never heard anything since. So that's where we're at, is I'm still waiting for documentation from somebody stating that we are being held liable for the, for these trees or for offense or for anything. Because Circle K does not feel like we need to do anything from a legal standpoint.
Uh, let me chime in before we open it up to other discussion. The planning board does not enforce anything. We follow the zoning ordinance. We follow other regulations. But if there are shortcomings, transgressions or something that needs to be attended to, if it's a legal issue, then it's up to the town to take it up with whoever and carry that ball. But the planning board doesn't. Anybody?
No, prior. Tom did come up with the initial meeting. Me and Tom spoke afterwards. Uh, you know, a lot of the things that we discussed in that original meeting with the old CEO, I felt were very targeted towards us without any information gathered beforehand. And I raised that concern to Tom. I was like, I don't think he's read the original document. I don't see anywhere with the town of Millenocket where it states that we are being held liable for this. Um, you know, Tom agreed. I told him I was gonna reach out to the old CEO, which I did and my project manager did, and we still have heard nothing. And I know he's gone now. However, that being said, this was well before he, he left. And we reached out to him several times. Surprise. Yeah. Um, I did bring the original email. Mike could ask me to bring it and I can read it if you want me to on what was the last communication that I had from the old CEO regarding the trees.
Yes, please, at least read it so that we all are aware of anything that came between, for the town.
So this came on Wednesday, August sixteenth, after some struggle with email communication from me, manage, the manager and Sean. Uh, ultimately, we figured out that he typed my email wrong. So this came several days, I think a week or two after uh, that initial meeting with me, Tom and Sean. Dear Matt, thank you for the time for meeting with me and Tom this morning. After discussed, I have reviewed the original Millenocket Planning Board conditions placed on the site plan approval on July twenty-third nineteen ninety-two. After reviewing the site this morning, there are a few conditions that are not in compliance with the original conditions. The original conditions require, one, a buffer zone is to be established along the west edge of the property to be developed. The buffer zone will measure thirty-two inches, including the ten inch row of the Millenocket Water Company plus twenty-two additional feet contingent to the row. The buffer zone is to be planted of four rows of evergreen trees suited to the northern Maine climate. The trees are to be seven or be five to seven feet tall, which they're not. Uh, the rows are to be staggered as to create a visual barrier between the proposed development and the adjacent residential property. The area is to be maintained to assure that the visual buffer is kept in place. Currently, there are two rows of evergreen trees. Two, the applicant will block Field Street as to not be used to access the property by vehicular traffic. Currently, there is nothing blocking vehicular traffic from entering the parking lot from Field Street. It is my determination that one, two additional rows of evergreen trees need to be planted as outlined above. And two, a barrier needs to be placed to prevent vehicle traffic from being able to enter the lot from Field Street. Although th- this is unlikely, it is possible and, and is a condition of the permit. It is my goal to address these items. Informally through this process, I would ask that these items be corrected within thirty days. If these items are not corrected, a notice of violation will be issued. Starting the process of corrective action, action up to including civil penalties and revocation of a certificate of occupancy. I'd be happy to discuss either of these issues with you further if you wish. Respectfully, Sean Mitchell, Code Enforcement Officer.
And that's August of two thousand twenty-three?
Yes. So the, the vehicle issue isn't really a problem like it's been stated. It's more foot traffic. Uh, so the foot traffic that we get through has been created over years. I mean, even when my parents were kids, that was the foot traffic. You know, i- it's been there forever. However, it is extremely difficult to get a side-by-side or anything up that, that hill. There's a giant manhole cover right there. It makes it difficult. Um, I have never personally seen anything other than a small dirt bike that a kid's riding or some, someone on their motor, uh, not motorcycle, on their bicycle, walking up over that hill. But to get an ATV or a side-by-side up through there is pretty damn difficult. So that's my opinion on the matter.
Uh, let me just chime in. I, I didn't witness anything as far as vehicle traffic. But where that manhole cover is, uh, over the years, something happened there. Cause a lot of that is above the ground.
Yeah.
And it disappear on its own. Something, something happened. And it happened over a period of time. As far as foot traffic, uh, people walk with four. And I don't know that that would be something this community, that this board would deal with per se. The, the intent is when that project came in, in ninety-two, when I was on this board, when that project came in, the highway commercial zone in proximity to the neighborhood commercial zone, you are a two-zone that on Field Street was significant. That was the reason that the barrier buffer was requested, which we, uh, I'm going back to memory. So take that for what it's worth. Uh, we, uh, we didn't go with, I think, like a sixty-foot buffer. And sixty-foot buffer for the size of the lot would have been not prohibitive, but it would have been quite limiting. So we went with another sized buffer that we thought would be sufficient. And that's how the tenant, ten feet of the right-of-way for the water company and the remaining footage that was added to bring it up to the total width of the buffer, that's how it materialized.
Right.
Any, yourself included, any comments?
I got one. Sorry for my harshness. I would like to ask if if yourself or you could appoint somebody to do a very simple thing is police your property boundaries or debris and stuff goes into everybody else's yard. It's there. Yep. Because I have received several complaints from individuals that do live.
We do it nightly. Um, my team does go out and do it nightly because it was a concern that I had. However, when people come in and grab a polar pole or they come in and grab a strike and they walk down over the ledge, I can't send my group down over into the neighborhood to go pick up trash that comes from somewhere a lot. I'd love to. I just, I don't have the time for that. Nor can I be paying people to leave the store. Um, however, we do, do it a lot on our lot. I take a lot of pride in my store. These two gentlemen work for me. They take a lot of pride in the store. So that's something that we're always doing. Yeah, I agree. Yep. And that's something we will continue to do.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Not dismissed, but essentially I think what you've done already. Any other comments from, uh, Mike or planning board members? And let me again include John Cody and, and Mike Wallace, even though their whole attendance at the, at the meeting is a little bit, not up in the air, but it's unusual because of this, this number of people that are serving on the board. Uh, any other comments? Someone wanted to bring up something?
Can I ask a question? I remember this conversation and we, we talked about the hedging and we talked about the privacy issue um, and how long the construction was gonna take and the, the distance to the road and all of this, uh, as well as the back path, which has been there since I was a little girl. So that should tell you something. Um, Irving, I don't even think was there. I know it wasn't. Mrs. McAdams, my history teacher actually lived in that little house right there. So, um, anyway. What is the issue currently that you don't have somebody to approve what you've done? Or is, is it that somebody is saying that you're gonna take it all down? I don't, I guess I don't understand the issue.
So the CEO, the former CEO of Millenocket came up after the project, way after the project was completed. And was upset that he felt we didn't replace the buffer zone that was agreed upon in nineteen ninety-two.
So this is somebody that's no longer in that position?
Correct.
So the person that's in that position right now, have you discussed it with them?
Me and Tom have, Tom, isn't still you? Me and you briefly spoke, but we haven't talked about it in several months, but, um.
Well, I was thinking you were in on, on the whole thing because you were walking with Sean, so.
I was, I went up with Sean when we went up to measure it and look at it. But he was the code enforcement officer and he did the document off from the nineteen ninety-two.
And you're the acting code enforcement?
I'm the acting code enforcement officer.
So they don't have any ability to have anybody to talk to?
The problem that we have is, I saw it on the agenda tonight and it hadn't been talked about since. So I was afraid that there was gonna be a different discussion. You guys know Duncan's leaving and with Duncan leaving, we are planning on doing a full remodel of our store. Um, so there's obviously gonna be more permits involved and stuff. So I wanted to come to make it clear tonight that what, what, what had happened. Make it clear what was going on, where we stand. Um, Tom has been great. You know, obviously me and him have talked. However, I wanted to bring you guys aware because ultimately you do permitting. So if it does come up in the future, which it will be very soon, it's a discussion we were gonna have to have.
Though with Duncan leaving, is the window still gonna be back there?
No.
So they're
I hope not.
I mean, just, just, I, I don't know how you guys are planning on, on, yeah, some, some of them do. They Florida, yeah, Florida.
Yeah, I'm afraid they don't leave there.
It won't really be there, right? And so that barrier is gonna
Correct. It will basically be parked for my staff. I mean,
Right.
Uh, the reasons to go back there would be for deliveries for my drivers and that's, that's really it. So the traffic for Duncan would be basically eliminated. Yes, yeah, a lot of Duncan cups and stuff. They'll empty their cart right there because you know how people are. Uh, so he makes a good point. There'll be less vehicular traffic through there, which means less trash, less cigarette butts. Obviously won't stop the foot traffic, but.
It'll be safer, not so many cars.
I agree. Plus we won't have a line up to the road this year.
Your neighbors problem.
I'm gonna take my planning board hat off and put on my CEO hat. I haven't been back up since I came up after Sean had been there. You and I had the conversation.
Right.
Calmed you down. I'm gonna come up and take a look and we'll talk. And see if we can settle this and get it. So we can move ahead because I know, a- as you say, I know there's gonna be some plans coming to do some changes and alterations and stuff up there in the near future. So
Right.
We will, we'll talk.
Which is fantastic. I know you've been busy and I didn't know where things had gone with Sean with the transition, if he had given you anything. So kind of hitting two birds with one stone since, since you're here. Uh, but like I've made it clear to everybody in the past, if you ever have any questions, if I'm not at the store, I'm just a cell phone call away. I'm more than happy to talk, you know, I'm not about arguing. I'm about resolving issues, same as you guys. So if any of you have any questions, just call me and I can try to resolve it over the phone.
Can I jump in? Uh, the changes on the business, your business. Is it gonna be internal with footprint of the building gonna change or revamp?
Internal. Yeah. Well, I mean, mine is the Duncan window, but.
I'm just thinking going forward, it may be, would be less likely that that renovation, renovation would actually come with planning board, would be something, the sense with his position.
Right.
His position, it would be held, uh, internal and not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me call for anybody that has comments concerning what we've discussed tonight or maybe didn't discuss tonight because it hasn't been brought up.
Or to adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, by Tom, second by Mike. Any discussion? Those opposed, adjourned. Saying none, standing clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got seven thirty-six.